Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I'd like to start with a prayer and a pledge. Those who would like to join me. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity that you give us all to serve our community. We ask you to be with us as we deliberate and make decisions here at the council. Be with all our citizens, be with all our workers. We ask this in your name. Amen. Madam Clerk, roll call.
(Inaudible) Member Tibbs. Councilmember Bench. Mayor Pro Tem Clock. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Balls. Councilmember Bryant. Councilmember Humphreys. Mayor Browning. Nine members present, zero absent.
And just a reminder to the audience, please remain quiet and refrain from speaking. Also, if you have your phones or electronic devices, please take a moment to look at those and make sure that they are silent so that they do not interfere with the council meeting.
Mayor, I have a few announcements this evening. First one is, we ask the city residents to refrain from parking on streets or at the end of your driveway during snow events after what we've had, so that all the crews can clear the snow away from the curb. The city's waste convenience station is open on the second Saturday of the month. City residents can dispose of items such as building materials and recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. The next service date is this coming Saturday, February 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Also, to provide safe and reliable electric service, Consumers Energy will be conducting line-clearing work along their electric lines in the city. The proposed work area will be east of Bay Street, north and west of Michigan Avenue, and south of Union Street. Consumers Energy will notify those whom may be affected. However, line clearing may not be needed on all the properties. If pruning or tree removal is needed on your property, a Consumers Energy planner will notify you. Davy Tree Expert Company will perform the necessary clearing. Wood up to four inches in diameter will be chipped and removed from lawn areas. Remaining wood will be cut into manageable sections and left on your property. You will not be billed for this work. If you have any questions about this project, please visit Consumers Energy online at www. dot consumersenergy dot com slash forestry, or call their work planner at 989-791-5731. With that, Mayor, our next order of business is public hearings.
The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration when action may be taken. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing. Begin by stating your name. The main presenter or designated representative will be allowed 15 minutes. Other speakers will be limited to five minutes. Speakers may ask general questions but shall not ask questions of individual council members, city staff, and the audience. And the public hearing is not a question-and-answer session. And we have a public hearing regarding the urban cooperation agreement with Kochville Township to provide water service. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the urban cooperative agreement with Kochville Township to provide water service? Third and final time, is there anyone here that would like to speak reference the urban cooperative agreement with Kochville Township to provide water service? Being none, council members?
(Inaudible)
It's been moved and closed, moved and seconded to close the public hearing reference the urban cooperative agreement with Kochville Township to provide the water services. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
We are now at personal appearances.
And before we begin personal appearances, we want to welcome your thoughts and your input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you're speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from our citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. And finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to this council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Madam Clerk, our first personal appearance?
That would be Joyce Seals.
Good evening, council, our mayor, our manager, and all staff that are present here. Tonight, I come to speak on the ordinance that will amend the official city map by renaming Second Avenue to Roosevelt Austin Avenue. And I just want to come and thank the council people last session that you did, vote on this for your affirmative vote. Thank you for that affirmative vote, and I hope that we'll follow through and do the same thing on tonight. And for those who didn't vote for it, I still respect you. One thing about sitting at the council table, I respect people and having their separate opinions, so it's okay. That's a democratic process. But I just want to remind you that Reverend Austin, first of all, never asked for this to be done. This is something that citizens requested, not him. And because of his merit, exemplary life, his impeccable leadership, and outstanding community service, that's why we're asking for this. And he's getting close to 100. And so I think that he, and he's still doing well and functioning the community articulate as ever, and this would just be something great that we could do for him. And I will remind you that when his application for this process went through, it was under the old ordinance. And I'm thankful that you did consider that fact, that it was under the old ordinance. So thank you very much, and I know this is going to be affirmative. I missed Bible study for about eight to 10 weeks now, and Monday nights, coming here and going to school board function. So when you see me a little bit later, I'll be leaving though, but I already know that we're going to have an exciting tribute when we get ready to rename that street officially. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rosa Holliday.
Thank you to the Honorable Mayor, members of this great council, and city official manager. Good afternoon. I'm Rosa Holliday, 6261 Greenview Place, Bay City, Michigan. I'm here asking also for the renaming of Second Avenue to Roosevelt Austin Avenue. And you have voted for it, and I hope that you will continue tonight to approve that. We have lots in plan for that. Reverend Austin is just a humanitarian. He's an honorable man, so we are going to have people coming in from other states, filling the hotels, purchasing items, and the whole city will benefit from this. And this isn't just a one-time thing. This would be an annual Roosevelt Austin Day, and it would be very memorable for years and years to come. So I really hope you, as the council, vote in favor of that tonight, and we all looking forward to it. So is Reverend Austin. Even though he didn't ask for it, and since he knew it was happening, he is excited about it, he and his family. So, in fact, the whole city excited about this, which will come forth. So I really appreciate everything so far, and hope you will vote yes tonight on that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Willie Haynes.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager, and city attorney. My name is Willie Haynes. I live at 1800 Morgan Street, 48601, 602 Saginaw, Michigan. And I'm here because I wanted to get a feel of the community on Second Street, the businesses, and also the citizens who lived on Second Street. So I did a little survey, and I started on Genesee. And I went all the way down to Federal, Lapeer, Wadsworth, all the way down to Washington Street. And I talked to the businesses and also the citizens who live in those homes on Second Street, and they was in favor of changing Second Street to Roosevelt Austin. I talked to a family that lived on Second Street since 1947. It's two families there that live, been living there since 1947, right off of Washington. And that, those two families was highly in favor of changing Second Street to Roosevelt Austin Avenue. And I was under the weather last time that you had your meeting, so I wasn't able to be here. But I want to thank you for voting yes last time, and I'm praying and hoping that you will vote yes to pass this renaming of Second Avenue to Roosevelt Austin. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bishop Larry Camel.
Good evening, council, to the mayor, and to all of the city officials and manager. Bishop Larry Camel resides at 2985 Welland Drive, Saginaw, Michigan, and pastor of New Birth Missionary Baptist Cathedral, also the CEO of Perishance on Patrol. And I'm here tonight to continue to urge you on the passing of the ordinance to change Second Street for Dr. Roosevelt Roosevelt Austin. I'm here as a clergy member of this community and represent many clergy leaders. Would love to see this happen to Dr. Austin. He's a great humanitarian and leader in this community, and done many, many works of love and righteousness in this community. And I believe that Saginaw will be put on the map if we consider passing this ordinance, bringing in, as Rosa said, many people will come and celebrate this great man of God. And I commend you all for passing it last time, and I hope and pray that you will follow through tonight to make this a great, great effort for our city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Debbie Melkonian.
Good evening. Debbie Melkonian, 2116 Adams Boulevard, Saginaw, 48602, currently the president of the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association. I am here representing myself, and I'm here to update everyone on the progress of removing the tax cap. We had an informational meeting on the 26th of January, and there was a great representation from citizens and other agencies throughout the city. Our next meeting is this Friday. We will be meeting at the Ezekiel headquarters at First Congregational Church. And the purpose of that meeting will be to discuss the most basic information we need to get out to citizens, and how that message, so we're all on the same page, will be developed. This coalition is driven by the citizens and the residents of Saginaw. Getting the tax cap on the ballot, we're hoping for the August election, is driven by citizens and residents, and this time, not city council. We're hoping to have many meetings to inform the citizens. We're inviting anyone interested in contacting the Ezekiel Project on their Facebook page, and we'd like to know that we have the council's support as well. So the project is moving on, and we're hoping to get the tax caps removed finally. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Vowell.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and city manager. My name is John Vowell from 2542 North Oakley, here in Saginaw. I'm here for two reasons, and they're both very positive. A quick update, and I'm speaking for major cause for minors at the first portion of this. We just grew our 127 one-on-one students for the first time in three years at our program. We added 16 new students last week to our program, which brings it to 220 students that come through our doors each week for a lesson. That's the other part of this. I want to thank everyone that's in this room, that's sitting up at the desk here, and everyone that's part of this building. You have done nothing but treated all of us, for major cause for minors, with the utmost respect and support that you have given us to be able to grow from eight students in just six years to 220. It goes not only for you folks sitting in this room, it goes for everyone else in this community that has supported this program from day one. We have grown from a $2,000, $2,000 a year budget to $284,000 in just six years in Saginaw, Michigan. And I've got to leave you, I don't get a chance to see all of you at the same time, so I want you to know that there is only four other programs in this entire country, which Katrina, my lovely wife, and I had no idea when we opened this for the Saginaw children, that this is a special thing, and it didn't fall anywhere except Saginaw. And for the children, and for them to have a playground of music. And I want to thank you all for the love and support that you've not only given the children in this community, but my wife and I. So I thought I'd take the time to come down here and tell you all in the group. So peace, love, and rock and roll is what I got to say. Thank you. Thanks.
Our final speaker this evening is Demetrius Braddock. Do not see him. Therefore, we are now at remarks of council.
And council members, remind you that you have a five-minute limit. And tonight, we begin with Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a lot, but I do want to comment. First, on the issue of the renaming Second Street. We have four people here who have spoken on behalf of it very strongly. I am convinced that we should be awarding such an honor only to those people who are deceased, quite frankly. However, in the spirit of unanimity, on behalf of Reverend Austin, I will vote for that today. Second, Debbie Melkonian, thank you for your leadership on this tax cap repeal. It is essential for the future of the city that this happened. It is great news what you, Ezekiel Project, and the other leaders who are pursuing this are doing. You have my personal support, and I will help whatever way I can. Mr. Vowell, John, you and Katrina, I cannot say enough about what you two have done for Saginaw, for the city, and for its children. Most schools do not now have the kind of musical program, the arts, that your program is able to bring to these children. And having that opportunity is something that is a wonderful, wonderful achievement that you've brought to the city for these kids. Without it, some of these kids may end up on the street. Without it, some of them may turn to crime. And music is a door to our future. Many of you know I support the symphony, so, which is having a concert, by the way, on Saturday. Just a shout-out, on Saturday, it's going to be a great concert. It's a Valentine Day concert, so, yeah. So join us on the eighth, or 8 o'clock on Saturday. But music is a wonderful way to reach a lot of kids. So again, I can't say enough for the program you do. Thank you so much, and keep it up. With that, I am done. I got my shout-out for the symphony, so I'm happy.
Thank you. I too will be brief, but to our first four speakers, thank you for your commitment to, you know, getting this honor put forward, and I think that it's a worthwhile honor. I intend to support it again, and I think we're just fortunate that we have leaders like you, you know, honoring other leaders that, you know, mentored you and have influenced you guys. I think that just between our list of public speakers and Ms. Melkonian leading the way on our tax cap, and then John and Katrina back there, it's just a really good example and collection of all the wonderful people we have here in Saginaw, and all the things we have to be grateful for. To John and Katrina, thank you so much for being here, and thank you literally so much for being here for Saginaw, because we are lucky to have you guys here, and we would be crazy not to support your organization. But personally, your organization is extended family of mine, as far as I'm concerned. My kids have been receiving lessons from them since they were in their first location, and I don't even know how many years it's been now, but it's just such a loving and wonderful environment on top of the music and the opportunity to learn, you know, instruments that kids might not have the opportunity to take up otherwise. So thank you all for being here. Thank you, Debbie, for your efforts, and we look forward to you moving forward. And as always, you have my support, and I think the council's support as well, of course, but if there's anything I can do personally, let me know. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just can't say it much better than Councilwoman Bench here. I just say ditto, as far as Ms. Melkonian and Mr. Vowell. You know, my kids, they are wood, are wind instrument players, but, you know, we definitely respect the chords. Thank you for your service to the community, and thank you, Ms. Melkonian. As far as the street naming ordinance, I will be supporting it. Reverend Austin is definitely deserving of it, but more importantly for me is that I just think it would be unfair for us to attempt to change the rules in the middle of, I guess, being an athlete in the middle of the competition. You know, if the high bar is 10 feet, you can't change it to 12 feet when the pole altar is already in stride. They did what they were supposed to do, followed the ordinance, and they followed the ordinance. And I think, well, at least I'm going to respect that. And I just want to thank you for your service to the community, and thank Reverend Austin for his service to the community as well. Just going forward, I think I shared this with the staff, but I do respect the other argument, or the other side of the argument, just the lawyer coming out to me, but the other side of the argument as far as preserving the historic significance of the names. And I believe Lansing, the city of Lansing, they had similar diverging opinions, and they have what is called a street honorary system, or a street honorary, which they keep the name, but yet there's a second sign there which recognizes the person that's attempting to be honored. So I guess going forward, maybe that's something the council or the staff could consider, just to preserve both sides of the issue. But that's just me pretty much thinking out loud, but I will be supporting that name change. Thank you, Jeff, Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to start out with something about the greater Saginaw area that people may have known was underway, but it's almost done. The old Tri-City Airport Terminal is pretty much down to a flat piece of ground now, and I believe Mr. Mayor sits on the airport board?
Yes.
Yeah. So they've been watching the progress of this, I'm sure it comes up at their meetings. And that's about the last remnant of the name Tri-City Airport. It's MBS International now. On the Second Street name change to Roosevelt Austin Boulevard, I think at this point, the pros and cons have been provided very well on this, and I just want to say, when the change is approved, the petitioners will be in the position to bring their wishes to fruition on that. And the tax cap group Debbie came here to speak about tonight, I, my understanding will, is that it will be very important for that group to bring something to council that we can put in the form of, that can be placed on the ballot. So that will be very important, that that progresses and language is developed, that we'll make that something we can take action on. And that's really about my remarks for now.
I'll try to be brief and concise to the supporters of the renaming Second Avenue to Roosevelt Austin. Yay. Ms. Melkonian and the tax cap endeavor, yay. John and Katrina, yay. I love you.
(Inaudible).
I agree with him. I'd like to thank Mr. Vowell and his wife for the great job they're doing in the city of Saginaw, for bringing courage to minors. Here in the city of Saginaw is a beautiful thing, you know, to teach kids music. We really appreciate what y'all doing. Thank you very much. Ms. Melkonian, want to thank you too for trying to help us lift the cap, tax cap. I'm sure most of the city council people here will be working diligently to help you out with that too, because we do need it lifted here in the city of Saginaw. It's kind of hard to work on funds that we've made, the same amount of funds we've been collecting since, I mean, 30 years ago, I think. You know, we need to up it up a little bit. So I'm looking forward to working with that and hope the citizens, people, the citizens of the city of Saginaw is ready for it too this time. To the group of people that spoke on Reverend Roosevelt Austin, I'd like to thank you guys for coming and expressing your views. I too will be voting for it. And I was just thinking about some things, historical, other things that happened in the area right there. Dr. Carter had his doctor's office on Second Street. I think was the first African-American doctor to deliver kids, black kids, in this community. And so maybe this could be a start of something real big, considering this is the 50th year of the African-American festival here in the city of Saginaw, the longest ongoing festival in the nation that we know of. And for all this to accumulate here at the same time, it could be something to start something real good. So I'm looking forward to helping out and working with that too. As a matter of fact, I got somebody that donated a large substantial amount of money to African-American festival this year too. And so I just think this is really, really, really good. And for Willie, for you to go down and do your due diligence, and walk down the street and talk to the residents there, I think that was really a good job, but I really appreciate you for doing that. So I think we got a lot to look forward to in the city of Saginaw, but we just ought to got to be inclusive to everybody. You know, that's what's going to make Saginaw a great place. I think about the fact that we don't have any, too much African-American entertainment here in the city of Saginaw, and this could be something else that maybe spill off into that same area right there. I do understand that we do have issues with maybe a younger crowd who just can't seem to get along when we have parties and stuff like that, but eventually we're going to tackle that issue too. I don't know if we have to have more security, or people may have to pay for their own security to make sure that it's safe. I've been in New Orleans, and that's the wildest, probably the block in the United States. And they make sure that that thing is going good, and they letting people drink outside, so I don't see why we can't have something, maybe even similar to that, I don't know. But, you know, sometimes you plant some seeds, other people will grow the tree and nurture it, so maybe that happened to this. But as a city council person, I think that's our job to make sure that we are inclusive in the city of Saginaw. And as long as I be here, I'm going to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to start off by saying, commending the mayor on his city address. I thought he did a phenomenal job. Yes, most definitely. Very early at 7:30 in the morning to be at the Dow Event Center, but nonetheless, he did a fantastic job in representing us, so I just wanted to extend my thanks for that. We've had a really busy last couple of weeks here, between the strategic plan and some of the other events that we're working on. One of those events was a really unique event. It's the first time I ever did it, and it was the homeless count involving a federal grant, where we go under bridges and looking in tunnels and any, any kind of place that we think, you know, strategic target areas. strategic target areas to try to alleviate homeless and to connect the homeless in our community with resources. So, that was something I encourage everybody to do, and it was really, really unique. Hopefully, we could expand a little bit on it and get some more public safety officials out there though, 'cause we are all over the place sometimes with this, and we wanna be safe. I also had the privilege to attend Saginaw Valley State University Diversity Day through the Inclusion and Diversity Department headed up by Dr. Mamie Thorns. We had a great day. There was about 175 kids from the Great Lakes Bay region. And we sit down with anywhere from six to eight of them at one table, and we just kinda talk about what we do. What does it mean to be an elected official? What does it mean... I see we got a young guy here today, and that's when I kinda decided, when I was around that age, that I wanted to be involved in public policy and city council on this, because I was young like that and looked at a body like this and said, "Man, you can really make some difference." So, it was just a great day. It always gives us a little shot in the arm that I need, being a leader. So, it was phenomenal. In addition to that, really on the boards and commissions between the Riverfront Development Commission, the Planning Commission, we're just getting things rocking and rolling for 2018. The Riverfront Development Commission, you know, we have the Subcommittee Art and About, and that is doing so good. I wanna commend everybody who participates in that. We're gonna have 12 pianos that are gonna be painted, and those are gonna be all throughout the Riverfront District. So, I play, played since I was four. I'm looking forward to this, and I think that kinda ties into the mission of Major Chords for Minors, you know, trying to connect our young people with the resources that we have available. So, it's just gonna be beautiful. They've commissioned, I believe, 12 different artists, one for each piano. So, in the years past, I just gotta commend it, because in years past, they've done the sculpture project. We had David Zinn here, and I think this is just gonna be another thing to bring people to Saginaw, to show off Saginaw, to celebrate Saginaw. So, I just wanna send my commendations off to them. And that will be it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon. It is redundant for me to keep saying everything they say, but let me just do my shout-out. Reverend Austin, kudos. Debbie, kudos. Major Minors, kudos. If I go back and try to say everybody's name, I'm gonna mess it up, so it's better just to give everybody kudos. The last two weeks have been exciting. I attended a Martin Luther King... Well, I... Well, I... On Martin Luther King Day, I actually... I actually was at the Civic Center, and I attended that organization that had the Martin Luther King Day luncheon. Then the following week, I went to Saginaw Valley, where Mamie Thorne put on one. And one of the African-American ladies from Dal Corning, she spoke. She was phenomenal. They also gave out awards to, I think it was like 10 kids, 10 young people throughout the ci... Not just Saginaw, a city. They just went through the whole little gamut of the tri-county. That was really, really exciting. I just got elected to Michigan Miss Police Elected Official Academy. I am now their vice president for that. Saginaw, we getting on the map, 'cause I'm working on trying to get some classes in the city of Saginaw and to bring the money into our city. I've got two announcements I need to make before I forget. On the 17th of February, it's Walk for Warmth for Saginaw Community Action Center. It is really, really, really important, because the funds are used to help individuals pay consumer power bills. And this is for people who have income that is above property. Anyone that needs their consumer power bills, they are now taking applications. I'm gonna say the number, but I'm gonna make sure I get it on the webpage if I can, but the number is 989-282-2000. They are taking applications right now, and they will be taking applications through to the month of May. So, everybody calls and say, "Randy, where do we go?" Now you have a referral source that is not gonna run out of money if we can help it, but they're gonna continue to do what they do. On February the 26th, it is after... It is Black History Month. Taste of Soul is gonna be at First Wall Community Center. It will begin at 11:30. And I think that's it, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to congratulate the mayor as, for the second year that I've been, you are outstanding. I got into arguments with the county, but I don't care, because he did a better job, you know? And he really, really came home with it. You could tell from his speech that there was heart in it. It was just not a ramble. He spoke from the heart. And when you speak from the heart, you don't even have to look at your notes, because it just flows. And so, I was truly impressed, truly impressed. The only downfall was, we ran out of coffee three times. And if you had got up and been there since seven o'clock in the morning, you wanted some coffee. So, but other than that, Mayor, I think he did a fabulous job. And I'm gonna miss you, and nobody else will miss you sitting next to you. I'm gonna miss you. And he did announce that he wasn't gonna be with us anymore, so... I'm just... It's like, they say, "You gonna cry?" I say, "No, not yet. We'll wait till he leaves." But I just wanna thank everybody for coming out. I wanna say, I really wanna thank the street crew. The only problem I got with y'all is, you say for us not to park on the edge of the driveway, but y'all throw the snow back on the edge of the driveway. It took me two hours to shovel my driveway. Now, I gotta go back and shovel it, 'cause they came and cleaned my streets. So, can y'all just take it another way?
We don't charge you for doing your exercises out there.
All right, yeah.
We like your motivation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, a couple of comments here. First of all, you know, I'm totally, 100% in support of the Reverend Roosevelt-Austin's changing. Please keep us updated after this... The vote today, what's happening and the timeframes and stuff. So, please, please do that. Ms. Malconian, I am not in favor of council putting this tax removal on the ballot. And I made that clear before. This needs to be a petition drive from the citizens, and I really want the citizens to do that. And that means people are gonna have to get signatures, and for every signature, you're gonna have to talk to that person and get that support even before we start. And I think that's gonna be critical for us. So, I don't know what timeframe you guys are looking at, but there's a process that has to be done, and there's language that has to be approved. And so, hopefully, hopefully, that will be... Excuse me, coming up in the near future. So, thank you so much. I enjoyed that first meeting. Unfortunately, I'm out of town this one, but I enjoyed that first meeting and the enthusiasm that was there and the many, many different groups. Unfortunately, my State of the City address is over. I would've loved to use the term "a playground of music." We're a little late now for me, but what an opportunity. What... Thank you for sharing that. I mean, hundreds of students having a playground of music. And it doesn't matter if it's snow, rain, 'cause that will always be there. And again, giving youth an alternative, a super-alternative to some of the other lifestyles that are going on that is very negative. Just thank you so much for that, very much. Thank you for my fellow council members who could make it, 'cause others got jobs and others got... And so, I certainly understand it. But thank you for coming, and thank you for the staff, administration, for coming to the State of the City address. I appreciate that. And you can tell by my comments that how proud I am of this city and the staff and everyone sitting at this table, that we're very, very proud of that. I did announce that I'm not seeking reelection in November, and this... In November will be marked pretty close to 50 years combination. And so, I'm excited, and there's some exciting things happening. I think there's still... I have just amazing hope for this city and what we're moving forward. But we got a lot of work to do, and it's a long ways to November, so we'll keep on working and certainly doing it. I see two young people in the audience. I know that this probably wasn't your choice of things to do tonight, but it was required, probably. And we're gonna get into our regular order of business, and if your timeframe allows you to stay, please do love to meet ya, love to shake your hands. Every one of these council members would love to do that. So, for our young guests out there, please, please stick around if you can, and we'll try to make this as quick as we can. With that, that ends my remarks. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. That takes us to reports from the manager.
Thank you. I would like to thank council and the staff also for attending the January 20th Strategic Planning Session, and also thanks to our presenters, who were... A number of them from outside agencies. I think they did a good job and provided a lot of excellent information for council. Congratulations to the mayor for another great State of the City speech. I'll tell you, he worked very hard on that with Vicki Davis especially. So, he does quite a bit of work on those and spends a lot of time preparing, so I'm glad it went well. And if you didn't get a chance to see it, it's playing on SGTV as well. I did get an opportunity to visit Major Chords for Minors. It's a great organization, and I think Councilman Bench can probably assist with setting up a tour of that, if any council members are interested in that. Great opportunity to see what they do. The... One of the things that we had an update on at the conference I was at is new drinking water lead and copper rule guidelines that the state is looking to put in place through an administrative process. And I'll say that you can't say enough about Kim Mason, our Director of Water and Wastewater Treatment. She's kept up on this. She's very knowledgeable about it. And there were some very interesting things presented from the DEQ at that session. But I'll mention that there is a public hearing in Lansing on Thursday, March 1st at the Lansing Center. If council members are interested in learning more about that, please contact me, and we can even set up a meeting with Kim and Phil if you wanna know in detail about the possible changes and what comments would be interested in taking there. MML, I think, is also working on that. No doubt that these changes will likely have a significant impact on our water rates, because it will have significant cost for the city. So, it's important for us to have input there. And finally, I would... I'd like to read something that Chief Ruth wrote, and also congratulate Officer Doug Douglas Stacer. He's been selected as a February Officer of the Month. And Officer Stacer has been recognized for his recent exceptional police work on several occasions. Officer Stacer was on patrol near the Holland Street Bridge when he heard what he thought to be a woman screaming. Upon further investigation, a woman was discovered to be under the bridge lying on the ice, lacking proper clothing for the weather conditions, hypothermia, it said, and she likely would not have survived the night had Officer Stacer not heard her. So, I think that's a great story and also shows the dedication that our officers have, and also the fortitude they have to when they hear something to go and investigate that, particularly when one of our citizens needs assistance. And I believe that it wasn't easy to find this young woman as she was actually out on the ice. And clearly, with the condition that she was in, she probably would not have survived the night if not for the officer's work. So, congratulations to Officer Stacer. He does good work frequently, and he is one of our K-9 officers, so I wanted to note that this evening. And Chief Ruth had sent that last week. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Madam Clerk.
We are at the consent agenda.
And the... As soon as I find my place here. Announced the agenda has been available on City... At City Hall, on the city's website, and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, we are now at reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
And is there any council member that has a report from any of your board or commission that you would like to share?
We are getting our money in, right? We talked about... Okay. Okay.
Here, we'll give an update to council. However, he's requested to wait, I think, until April, when they do some more work on their budget. He'd like to present to council at that time.
Any others? Madam Clerk, we have two appointments. Is that correct?
Do you want that with one motion, allowing for exception, or...
Move that with me. Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve the two reappointments here, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. You are now at introduction of ordinances. We do have one this evening. We have two. Our first one is to amend Section 99.11, traffic control and safety requirements of Chapter 99, Special Events, of Title IX, General Regulations.
Need a motion to introduce? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? If not, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries, and the ordinance is laid over under Charter provision.
Our second ordinance to introduce is to add Chapter 117, Business Establishments of Title XI Business Regulations.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
We are at consideration and passing of ordinances. We have one this evening. To amend the official city map by renaming Second Avenue to Roosevelt-Austin Avenue, from Washington Avenue South to East Genesee Avenue.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
We are now at resolutions. Our first one is to approve the obsolete property rehabilitation application amendment for 107 South Washington Avenue.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our second resolution is approve the authorization change to the standard street lighting contract with Consumers Energy.
Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, you are at motions and miscellaneous business.
Counselor, is there anything to come before the counsel? If not...
If I may, just remind, Saturday...
Get a card.
Music. Valentine music.
Motion to adjourn? Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, we're adjourned.